Thank you. Next item, please.
Graduation recognition, Dr. Glenn Maleko, Ms. Shannon Peterson.
So I'm going to ask Ms. Peterson to come on, and I, you know, Trustee Lane had made some comments on this. I want to just, you know, before she comes on, let's give a big round of applause to our graduating students. Congratulations. You know, Dearborn, we don't rush. We do things in a very deliberate manner. We get input, and I know Trustee Thorpe, Trustee Lane, I believe, and Trustee McDonald, and we're on several student meetings. We had to put this graduation ceremony together last week. We have one more to go at the Early College, President Cavallunas College with Mr. Fadlola. And I got to tell you, and I know the trustees have been getting the feedback, and we do know that people were disappointed because we couldn't have the tradition. But it really turned out great, and honestly, we're proud of our students. We've been receiving multiple emails from the community thanking the administrators, the principals, who really worked hard on this with David Mustin and crew. You saw Eric out there, Jacob, the whole team just worked hard. And we knew at some point we had to make a decision, and so I want to thank the board because you did. You made the tough decision, said, all right, we're going to move forward, and it turned out very well. And I feel very good about how we honored our students. And I think all the trustees who were there as well, and those, even if you couldn't make it, it's, you saw the feedback coming back, and so it was a fantastic thing. And I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Peterson, but very proud of our students and what happened last week and our entire staff. And thank you to everyone for being part of this deliberate process that took us months to come up with. But we did the right thing, and we did right by our students, so, given the situation.
Well, good evening, and this is really great because I get to show my screen and not my face, so I love that. 2020 graduates, we're 1,803, and I would like to echo Dr. Maleko's comments. What I admire the most is the resilience of our students and the genuine appreciation they had for their teachers and administrative teams for what they did do. So I think our teacher, I think our students showed a lot of grace. Our graduates this year, and this is a rough estimate because we were not in school. So the counselors typically chase kids down in the hall to find out all of their scholarships. But this year, $8,797,874 in scholarships were offered to our students. As far as our early college students go, 76% of those students who are in the five-year program and have the option to earn the associate's degree did complete the associate's degree. We do have many students that get as many credits as they can, knowing they're going to go to a four-year institution and finish up. And we're proud to say where our students end up going after they leave us in Dearborn. And our most common colleges, of course, Henry Ford College is right up there, and we would expect nothing less. You have them in Dearborn, you have them in Ann Arbor, Wayne State, and Boston. But this year, we have students going to quite a few Ivy League, including Stanford, Harvard. And you can read the list, but we're so proud of those students as well because that's quite an accomplishment just being accepted by any of those. And many of them have scholarships as well. So this information is about a year old because it takes the state a while to compile it. But 77% of our students enroll within six months of graduation and 86% within 12 months. There's another option that we have, our students that fill out a model college options survey. They sent us information last week that said 93.6% of our students who filled out that survey indicate that they plan to attend a four-year institution. And 36% of them plan to pursue science, technology, engineering, or math with plenty of. So we're pretty proud of that, and 30% of them say they will be the first person in their family to attend college. So our students are doing great things. Thanks to the wonderful supportive staff and families, and we're very proud of them.
Thank you very much. Congratulations, class of 2020. Are there any questions for Director Peters?
I'd just like to make a comment.
Please.
I was a wimp, and I got underneath the tent out on Fordson Field. But I saw so many staff members there in suits, in graduation robes, with 90-plus heat. Ms. Peterson said the students were resilient, their families were also, and our staff was magnificent. They really bring me to tears. Mr. Casebolt, Dr. Green, Mr. Martin, Ms. Alcadre, you were amazing. And all the way rolling down to your staff, teachers were there, we clapped in and out. Several of our trustees were there, and I've been to lots of graduations of nieces and nephews. It's not always like that, but Dearborn is really an awesome community. I was so proud. And for incoming seniors, I do want to encourage them to keep their eye on the prize because we will get out of COVID someday. Maybe in the next year, we'll have a vaccine. We have to hope for that. And they can all plan on going into science, maybe, to find that vaccine. But we need them to buckle down for the next year, for the seniors. For those who are departing, I have nothing but dear best wishes.
Thank you. Trustee Moser?
Yeah, I'd like to also congratulate the class of 2020. It was great to see so many graduates and so many families having their personalized graduation. I'd like to thank everybody who took part in organization of it. I know it was a lot of work behind the scenes, and I can't wait to see the videos that will be produced by our staff as well that will show this graduation in a very special year. And I'd like to echo Trustee Lane's comments that for this graduating class, we're looking up to you to, for inspiration. And you will go to college, you will go to pursue your dreams and whatever you choose, and make us proud as well, so congratulations.
Anybody else have any comments? I can't see, so just go ahead.
Yeah, I'd just like to say
Go ahead.
That I hope that their first-class reunion of this 2020 class is something beyond spectacular because this is the only opportunity besides what we were able to provide in such a limited fashion, but wonderfully represented this year for their graduation that come their first-class reunion, be it in one year or five years, that they all make every effort to attend, and they have the biggest party that they could possibly throw in order to get in all those celebrations that they were denied this year. It's, it was unfortunate, but it was also inspiring to see these students still celebrate in any way they could.
Dr. Mead?
Yeah, I'd just like to say to the graduates, congratulations. And I also would like to tell them how it was really important that they made Henry Ford College their top choice because it's inexpensive and great education, so we look forward to seeing them on campus.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Just, just one.
Trustee McDonald, do you have anything to add? I think your screen froze.
Just to reiterate everyone else's, congratulations. I loved the hat in Shannon's presentation, Class of COVID. You guys did us proud. You really did. I saw parents just beaming, and that's something I always look for. And you did a great job under very difficult circumstances, and I absolutely agree with Trustee Petkoff. Have a heck of a reunion. Make it prom and everything else rolled into one. So congratulations again to everyone.
Trustee Thorpe?
Yeah, I know this, excuse me, was not the graduation that many had hoped for. But due to the situation, we had to do what was in the best interest of everybody. I had a chance to talk to several parents afterwards just to gauge what they thought of it, and many of them were very happy with what we did. Like Dr. Maleko said at the beginning, we weren't the first to come up with what our plans were going to be, and that's because we were trying to keep things fluid, and the situation keeps changing. But a lot of people were very happy on that one, once it finally came to pass. And while it might still sting right now, you're going to have stories that none of us have, for better or worse. So best wishes going forward.
Thank you. I also would like to thank the administration and the principals for making this happen. I know it's not what we wanted, it's not what the students wanted, but Dr. Green, Principal Casebolt, Principal Alcadre, and Principal Martin, thank you very much. I know at Dearborn High, I heard from one of the parents, who knows, moving forward, it might be a different kind of graduation. I had a parent call me, said it was her third child graduating from Dearborn High. She said, "The first two I sat for two and a half hours or three hours in the heat, waiting for my daughter's names to be heard, but this was amazing." If you, I'm not sure if you heard how that happened, but it was beautifully done. And I know Mr. Martin thanked Terry Muslmane, she's, she had a lot to do with that. It was set up in front of the building. The parents would drive up with their graduate, graduate, get out of the car, walk down the line, grab the diploma, saw us for congratulations, and the parents were literally like 10 or 12 feet away from their graduate the whole time. So they spent about 10, 15 minutes in line. They didn't have to get cooked in the heat. Have you ever been down there in the, what do we call it?
Oh, down in the?
Down in the valley?
Down in the valley, there you go. There's a, there's a former pioneer, always a pioneer, right? Yeah. So yeah, congratulations, class of 2020. We are very proud of you for representing. Moving forward?
Just one comment, if I could just make two, and I know we thanked a lot of people. Want to thank all the staffs. I know you mentioned the teachers. I had a real good conversation with one of our speech pathologists, Alyssa Coleman. I got to interact with staff, and they were dedicated, you know, teachers and others, the engineers, making sure everyone was taken care of. And Ms. Osborne from the Berry Center came to every single one. I have to mention her name. She had her sign, and she was saying, hey, I'm proud of you students. So she was with some of us that went to all of them throughout those. So I had to take this time and just mention the staffs and mention a couple of those individuals. And I know all of you had good conversations with teachers and other staff, so thank you. Thank you to the board for your leadership with this.
Thank you. Okay, next item, please.
Next item is citizen participation. Citizens wishing to address the board on agenda and non-agenda items for action can complete a virtual blue card that will be posted on Monday, July 20, 2020, on the district's news website. Forms received by 7:10 PM will be read with board secretary. The board may not be in a position to respond to non-agenda items. Therefore, speakers should not anticipate immediate response to their comments or questions. For the medical concern, not mention the names of students or school employees. Please keep your comments as possible, board president, reasons, rights, and lying. It's my understanding that President Barry will read blue card, but I have one that was submitted virtually. This is from Mrs. Elena Shook, representing herself. She's a parent of four children in Dearborn School. Her comment is, hello, I want to support our amazing art and music education. We're blessed to have them in Dearborn School. I want to know that our art and music program is appropriate with the format the school goes with this. Also, I have heard there is a chance online education could be outsourced. What would that look like for our amazing teachers employed by the school district? End of comment.
Thank you. Yes, and I have two others. I'm sure that the other two people are still here with us. They're going to address us. So the first one comes from Ms. Lisa Gaddard. She wants us to speak to the board about the fine art education, fine arts education in Dearborn Public Schools. Lisa Gaddard, please, from Dearborn.
Thanks a lot. I timed myself, so I won't take up more than like two minutes. I'm kind of blown away by this whole discussion. This is so, it's such a weird time, and I, I just want to tell you from the bottom of my heart, I really appreciate. I can't even wrap my brain around what this is going to mean, organizing, and I appreciate it so much. And I really, I agree with what you said, Ms. Lane, about asking parents to be patient and to support the schools. You have my support. I just want you to know, I really feel a lot of confidence, so thank you. I came here tonight to express a growing concern that I've been thinking about for like a couple of years. And I, I've actually thought for a couple of years, one of these days, I'm going to go to a school board meeting, and I'm going to say this. And then coronavirus came and like overnight just changed everything, and it feels like what I'm about to say kind of maybe doesn't matter. I don't know. I still want to say it. Because although I think there are many things right now for us to worry about and plan for, I still believe that this problem is relevant, and it deserves more examination, maybe than it's getting right now. We have music and band teachers that are being asked to straddle multiple schools in the district. And we have drama programs operating essentially without a budget. Issues surrounding fine arts funding in Michigan Public Schools, I think it's practically baked in because in Michigan, funding for the arts isn't mandatory the way PE is or something like that. I'm not going to bore you with any online facts, but you all have the ability to Google, just like I do. And if you type in the effect of fully funded fine arts on academic performance and click on literally any link, you'll find plenty of studies that show that fully funding the fine arts, it, it doesn't just enhance, it, it really does help facilitate academic performance, superior academic performance. When you defund fine arts programs, you're asking the teachers who run these programs to do more work with fewer resources. And there's no question that that deteriorates the educational outcome. Personally, I know not everybody feels this way, but personally, I, I feel like if you scaled back a reading or a math program and decided to maybe spread out those teachers over districts, you'd have the exact same problem. You'd have, you'd have fewer mathematicians and readers in your district. It would degrade the outcomes. And there are also so many studies that show that kids that live in less affluent areas suffer disproportionately more when they don't have a fully funded fine arts program than kids in wealthier areas. I've had more than one administrator say to me that the pool of parents in our district who really care deeply about fine arts is shrinking. I don't think that's true. I will say this, I think all parents benefit from well-run parent, uh, programs. My own kids didn't go out for sporting programs, but I never saw that as a reason to defund athletic programs in our district because I know they're important to many families. For several years, this district has been, I'm going to sound dramatic, but has kind of been starving high school fine arts programs by giving middle school principals the ability to either get rid of or shrink important programs if they think there isn't enough student interest, or as I've had principals say to me, parents don't seem to want these programs. To that, I say, the volunteer-based after-school programs I've observed, they cannot keep up with the number of students who want to participate in plays and concerts. But it's really problematic to expect parents to support a program without full funding and, this is the most important part, fully qualified educators running the program in every school. An after-school program at one school is not a theater program or a choir program, and it's inequitable. And it seems to go against, a little bit of edut speak, I learned recently, the professional learning community model. You know, my kids, your kids, our kids, and I just feel like if kids at one school have a great theater program, it seems really unfair that kids in another middle school don't. I came here tonight to say all of this, and I know the school board is not involved in day-to-day decision-making. I get that. But I also know that administrators do pay attention to these meetings, and I've started a parent group on Facebook. It's called Keep Art Education in All Dearborn Schools. I've reached out to a lot of teachers in the district just to hear what their experiences are. But I know that the only way to grease this wheel is to keep squeaking. And even in the face of what we're coming up against in the fall, I'm scared that these programs, which are very important to kids I know and parents I know in the district, I just feel like they're viewed as the icing, and I definitely think they're part of the cake. So I invite parents across the district to join me. I would like to see a restoration of what we had in Dearborn just a couple of years ago. And I just, the last thing I wanted to say is, I just think every student in our district should have full access to the same fine arts education opportunities that are offered in select, it seems to me, select schools. So thank you for letting me talk.
Can you please give us that group's name again?
Oh, that's nice of you to ask. The name of it is Keep Art Education in All Dearborn Schools. I'm the moderator, and I'm not letting anyone join the group that isn't a Dearborn parent. There's like a little quiz you have to take. So if you want to join, you have to take the quiz, and then you have to be a Dearborn parent.
Can I be a Dearborn grandparent?
Yes, yes, a parent or a guardian. You have to be connected to Dearborn Public Schools.
Thank you for coming up today, addressing us, what you said on quote-unquote, I believe, pool of parents that don't appreciate the fine arts or that appreciates the fine arts shrinking. That's the very first time I've heard of it. So without mentioning any names, please reach out to Dr. Maleko, and any principal or administrator that's said that to you, please, I'm sure Dr. Maleko will address that. I can, I, I'm more than happy to have him chime in, but I know every time I speak to my colleagues, we're all in support of the fine arts. There is a middle school that's done a phenomenal job with theater and musicals.
Yes, but that's been run by volunteers. I know because I'm one of them.
I get that, I get that, but it was a start.
It is.
Now, I'm seeing, I'm seeing other buildings picking up on it, the other middle schools, a couple of the elementary schools. And eventually, yes, we have to have some skin in the game.
There's been talk, and I appreciate talk. But we need to have qualified educators teaching those classes, and they need to be available to all students. And that's not what's happening right now. And God bless the volunteers. I'm one of them, and I love doing it. But we need teachers doing it, and we need parents supporting those teachers. So that's all I want to say. Thank you very much.
Appreciate you. Second card is for, from Mr. Paul Gaddard, also from Dearborn, addressed to address the board regarding edgenuity and how it affects teachers' positions, pay, and benefits.
Hi. Thank you for hearing me. My question is about if, and some of the answers to these questions might be addressed more fully on the fourth, when we're able to hear the plans of what's going to be taking place. I recognize we're in a very fluid situation, and things could look very differently just even a week from now, as they do today. But my question is related to edgenuity, which my understanding is that that is going to be the, the program that might be adopted if we go to all online. And my main question is about if we do use an online program like edgenuity, what happens to our teachers? How will we utilize them? How will the positions be affected? How will their pay be affected? If they're hired as, as to support edgenuity, will they still be receiving benefits as part of their benefit package? So it's a comprehensive question, so whatever you can tell me about that as of today, and again, I realize I may not have all the answers, but that's, that's my question.
Please.
So I can't comment yet on the specific product because, to be honest, we haven't decided yet. We are looking at different options, and we had a committee that looked, looked at it. And so I don't want to get into the different softwares that we're looking at. There's two separate things. One is software that we need for the whole district. And when we went, when we had the closure, we had, as you know, Google Meet. And then we had some issues with that because they don't have the same, some of the security protocol. And we had some students that gave out pass codes, and we, we've actually taken care of that, by the way. And we did catch every single one, by the way, with the help of the Dearborn Police and Mr. Matur and Mr. Leacher. So then we went to the big blue button, I-Learn. We had a committee, though, that I directed way back in early May. I said, I want you to look at all options that are out there. So there's two separate things. One is, and it's something because we surveyed the parents, some parents want an online-only option. So software that you've mentioned has been, is being looked at for maybe what we call that online-only option. The other softwares that we're looking at would be all teachers would need to use them because if we're in stage three, we are home again for our students. If we're in stage four, we could have a hybrid where we have students part-time. So there's two separate things. The teachers would still, we would, we wouldn't need to, we wouldn't necessarily be reducing teachers. The teachers would still be running the classes. Some of these software platforms allow teachers to be that, you know, hybrid where they're, you know, similar to what you'd have when you take a university course, where you have some things online and some things in person. And so we would still need the teachers. Now, the reality is, and that's why we're going to survey parents that choose the online-only option, and I put out some general statements, is because then we would possibly need some teachers to be online-only teachers. So it would be our teachers and our union DFT members that would be running the, the classes. It wouldn't be an outsourced teacher or anything like that. These would be our teachers. We never had any plans to. Now, the software we're looking to possibly purchase, but we're not looking to outsource any of our own employees. In fact, we need them, but we've been in discussion with even the union head when we get that process out to see with our human resource department, to see who may be able to take those positions. Some of it may be because they're interested in those positions, and some may have different reasons for it. And others may be because they're skilled in online learning. So, and we do have, you know, we don't have a lot of time. I will say that, and this is the honest truth, even though we were moving on some online things during the continuity of learning plan, the reality is, is that we had to, we were reactive, not just us, but everywhere across the state and the nation for that matter. So this study through our committee is actually being proactive. We were proactively studying all the software available, other districts' software they're using, and we even have community members sitting on that committee. So I'm going to tell you, we're going to come up with a very good recommendation. I think everyone will be pleased with it. I also think that staff will have to, and Trustee Moser, you talked to me about this with training. There's going to be a transition for staff, once we make that final decision. But we don't have a lot of time, but I can tell you, we're in good shape, and I know the board's going to be getting recommendations, and, and we have committee members that have been working very hard. So hopefully, at least I gave you some direction, although I can't tell you which product or anything like that because we're still working on those, and, you know, I wouldn't want to say that yet, so.
Mary Lane? Trustee Lane?
I, I can tell the speaker that the city and some of us board members actually tried out some of the programs that are suggested for youth. And they, they will, they, they spent quite a few hours working through it and actually working on the platform, so they are going to have a good recommendation to the entire district. And then I would like to just add this also. This speaker, Mr. Gaddard, and the first blue card, Ms. Chalk, are referencing outsourcing from my own part. And over many closed meetings, I can say that our board does not want to get rid of our employees. We know our employees are valuable. They're our neighbors. They contribute to our district, to our college. They're, and we want them out of people. We must balance our budget, but we don't want that by getting rid of employees. We try everything we can to retain our employees. So I, I would like to put to rest any rumors that are going around that we want to outsource. We have fought tooth and nail to keep bus drivers, custodial, many other positions. So please, don't be, don't, don't, don't fear that. That's not what's in my heart.
I want to echo Trustee Lane's comments. Anytime, anytime a discussion of outsourcing happens behind closed doors, right away, it's, it's cut short, to be honest with you. I know many years ago, they talked about I know many years ago, they talked about transportation, just looking at numbers, you know, and the administration has the right. So sometimes, you know, janitorial services, I view, it just, it just, it's not even a discussion. So if it's a rumor out there, please help us say, no, that's not happening. Trustee Thorpe, you had something to add?
No.
Oh, I thought you.
Just agreement.
Okay, great. Thank you very much for that question.
Thanks for hearing my question.
Madam Secretary, next item, please.
Next item are the action items on our agenda. So if there are any items on this agenda which board members or superintendent wish to discuss or vote on separately, are there?
We do have two supplements at the table, just want to make sure.
Below.
Anybody? Dr. Malakow, you good? Okay, we're good. Trustee Secretary.
I would like to note for the audience, President Barry, that we have two items that are from Henry Ford College. They're being put on because the college does not have a July meeting, and it's a question of timeliness. So they're number nine and number 12.
Yes. Thank you for bringing that up.
And then, yeah, and then later in the day, we have two additional items that were added, the Miller Principal and the Director of HR. There is also a supplement which notes some vacancies, some additional appointments, and some change of classifications.
Correct. Thank you. Anybody? Okay, let's move forward, Madam Secretary.
Look, the action items numbered one through 14 be approved as recommended in this agenda.
So moved.
So moved.
We have a motion that's moved by Trustee Thorpe and supported by Trustee McDonald. Are there any questions for the administration? Hearing none, and seeing none, we'll just go ahead and go into a roll call vote, please, Madam Secretary.
Yes, McDonald? Yes.
Yes.
Dr. Mead, sorry I jumped you.
Yeah, no problem.
Did Dr. Mead reply?
Not yet.
That's what he's mute.
Yes.
Thorpe?
Yes.
President Barry?
Yes, thank you very much. Please attach a unanimous roll call vote and affirmative. And we, can we have the summary of agenda items, please?
Summary is, number one, approval of warrants. Number two, approval of contract to Luigi, Perdanti, and Son. Number three, approval of contract to Detroit disposal. Number four, approval of contract to Lower Huron. Number five through eight, approval of non-instructional and instructional personnel items, number 12. Number nine, approval of staff recommendations for HFC. Number 10, approval of 2020 high school graduates. Number 11, approval of board meeting change. 12, approval of change to the Financial Institute Designations and Practices Resolution for HFC. Number 13, appointment of Miller Elementary School Principal, number 14.
Thank you very much.
Appointment of Director of Human Resources Instructional.
Yes, I'm going to turn over to Dr. Malakow.
Thank you, President Barry. So I want to ask Amal Abdullah to come on the Google Meet now. I know she's been waiting. I'll let her say a few comments. She is the new principal of Miller Elementary, effective this evening, as approved by the board. Let's give her a big round of applause. Congratulations, Amal. We'll let you have a few words.
Thank you so much. Good evening, everyone. Superintendent Malakow, members of the Board of Trustees, thank you. Thank you for your trust and confidence, that, the trust and confidence that you have invested in me by appointing me to serve as the next principal of Miller Elementary. I'm truly honored and proud to be part of this incredible district. My entire life has been about Dearborn. As a student, as a teacher, as an administrator, and someone who lives in the community, as a peer of three students that attend Dearborn Public Schools, I am invested. I'm invested in our kids, and I'm invested in our schools, and I'm invested in our institution as a whole. It's a privilege to be able to continue to work with our amazing students, amazing staff and parents at Miller. And to be able to do it with the support of everyone in this district is truly a blessing. I'm honored to be part of this community and take great pride in leaving our efforts for continued success. Thank you so much.
I'd like to personally congratulate you, and thank you for your service and passion for our district. So best of luck to you. I know those students can be in good hands.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. And so next, I'm going to ask Amal Alcadre, if you noticed, the initials of both appointees are AA. I just want to point that out. So it must be some good luck here. But we'll have Amal Alcadre come on right now, and let's give her a big round of applause. Congratulations. I know she'll be working closely with Mr. Cedarland, who is here in the back of the room. So we'll let Amal say a few comments.
Good evening, board members and Dr. Malakow. I'm Amal Alcadre, current principal of Snoller Elementary School. I've been with Dearborn Schools for the past 20 years, and I plan to continue to serve the Dearborn community in my new role as Human Resource Director of Educational Staff. I'm appreciative of the opportunity, and I want to take this opportunity to thank you all. It is truly a privilege, and I am honored. Thank you.
Congratulations to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very exciting. Next item, Madam Secretary.
We have no discussion items. So the next one is Board of Education Business: Acknowledgement of Correspondence.
Anyone? I can't see the screen, so just chime in.
We did get quite a few emails on the graduations.
They were all positive, too, so.
Yes, they were.
Next item, please.
Board Member Committee and Organization Reports.
Do we have any? No. Okay, next item, please.
Board Member Superintendent Commentary.
Trustee Moser?
On two main things that I'd, I'd like to comment. One is the August 4th primary is around the corner. It's a wide election in the entire U.S. Obviously, Michigan is participating. There are many seats that are up in this election. So I'd like to ask everybody, if they haven't asked for their absentee ballot, to ask for one. If you're planning to vote on Election Day like me, I, I like to go to the polls. And please also practice social distancing once you go there and vote. But I remind everybody to, to vote on August 4th. That's the primary. I'd like to also thank the service workers who are still continuing offering food for our students throughout the summer. And that's a great thing that the district is doing, so no kids will go hungry through the summer. So I'd like to thank all of those who are participating. And the last thing that I'd like to remind everybody is the census. It's been extended, obviously due to the COVID situation. So if you haven't finished your census, it only takes 10 minutes. It's so crucial for Michigan to be counted right. So it doesn't matter what's your residency status here in the U.S., you need to be counted as well. So I encourage everybody to go out and remind others to, to fill out the census. And you can do it online. Thank you.
Trustee Thorpe?
Also want to let people know that this coming November, there are many elections, and some are for seats on this school board. The filing deadline is tomorrow, July 21st at 4:00 p.m., where you've got to get all the paperwork into the city clerk's office. If you want more information, there's several sites you can go to. But you might want to consider going to the Michigan Association of School Boards website, which is themasb.org. And they've got a whole pamphlet talking about what's needed.
Thank you. Anybody else? Please chime in. Can't see the screen. Let's see. Trustee Petrikov?
Yeah. Yeah, I just wanted to really quick, we've had a couple of instances of late of some kind vandalism and/or bad behavior on school property after hours. And I'd like to remind the neighborhoods that surround our school property, because this is taxpayer dollars that are impacted when these kinds of things occur, that if they see something, make a phone call. 943-3030 is the Dearborn Police phone contact number where you just see something suspicious. It's not the 911 number. You see people on school grounds. We are having a couple of issues in our neighborhoods. I think kids are bored and are finding other ways to occupy themselves during these times. But please make a phone call, because trespassing and vandalism is not acceptable on our school properties, and we need to protect our investments. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, anybody else? Okay, next item, please.
Requests for information and/or future agenda items.
Again, I can't see the screen, so just chime in if you have any requests. Now I can see the screen. Okay. Next item, please.
Future virtual meeting dates. Monday, August 10, 2020. HFC meeting, 7:00 p.m. via video conference. Details to be determined. Check online at www.hfc.edu/BoardMeetingSchedule. Second meeting, Monday, August 24, 2020. P12 Board of Education, 7:00 p.m. at the Administrative Service Center in the Frank Branchy Boardroom, following guidelines of the Governor's Executive Order, and virtually available live for viewing via YouTube Live.
So the August meeting is, Dearborn Public Schools is Monday, August 24th at 7:00 p.m. Thank you. There is no other business. We are adjourned for tonight. Thank you, everyone.